It's a good thing.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to call the order of the organizational meeting, January 9th, 2024. Order. Invocation will be given by council person, Kerschner.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing, please. I want to have a moment of silence for a friend of mine I've known for 45 years and the mayor of a neighboring city east Lake, Dennis Morley, passed away the other day, and we're going to miss him. Thank you, everyone. We're going to go right into the oath of office for Ward Councilpersons.
Mr. Blake, please join me.
Sure.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Sean Blake.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws.
and obey the laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions.
observe the provisions.
of the charter.
of the charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the municipality of Mentor.
of the municipality of Mentor.
and will faithfully.
and will faithfully.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
of Ward 1 Councilperson.
of Ward 1 Councilperson.
term ending 12/31/27.
Term ending 12/31/27.
27. Sir, congratulations.
Yes, thank you. It's great to be back for another term. I want to thank the voters in Ward 1 for returning me here. I enjoyed the summer getting out and knocking and meeting people that I've met before doing door-knocking and new people that I'd never met. So with that, I'm looking forward to another term, another chance to serve the community and the city of Mentor. So with that, I will step aside and let the next guy come up. Thank you.
Mr. Donovan, if you please join me. Sir, I ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Matthew Donovan.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws.
and will obey the laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions.
observe the provisions.
of the charter.
of the charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the municipality of Mentor.
of the municipality of Mentor.
and will faithfully.
and will faithfully.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
of Ward 2 Councilperson.
of Ward 2 Councilperson.
term ending.
term ending.
12/31/2027.
12/31/2027.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Ed.
Number one, that's a great law director we have. Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to serve as your president. It's been a pleasure. Mr. Marne, thank you for stepping up as vice president and being a partner with me and helping me through. Mr. Philippiac, you know, we all know we're as good as your people, who's under you, and I would say your administration and your department heads are the best in the state of Ohio, and it makes things a lot easier for us. You have the most wonderful people. Chief Searls and Chief Gunch, you're absolutely incredible. I say you were dropped down from heaven to us. I really appreciate you guys, and I'm ready to serve another term in Ward 2, and thank you so much for everything. Appreciate it.
Mr. Freeman, if you please join us. Your oath will be administered by our special guest, the Honorable Judge Rupel of the Lake County Common Police Court.
Raise your right hand. I state your full name.
I, Mark Freeman.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support.
that I will support.
the Constitution.
the Constitution.
and will obey the laws.
and will obey the laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions.
observe the provisions.
of the charter.
of the charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the municipality.
of the municipality.
of Mentor.
of Mentor.
and will faithfully discharge.
and will faithfully discharge.
the duties of office.
the duties of office.
of Ward 3 Councilperson.
of Ward 3 Councilperson.
term ending.
term ending.
12/31/2027.
12/31/2027.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say I look forward to continuing to work with my fellow council members, the administration. I want to thank the Ward 3 voters for re-electing me, and I want to thank the judge for coming out on this blustery night to swear me in. Much appreciated. Thank you.
If you'd please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm sorry, I need my greeting cards.
That's all right.
I state your full name.
I, John A. Krieger.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws.
and obey the laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions.
observe the provisions.
of the charter.
of the charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the municipality of Mentor.
of the municipality of Mentor.
and will faithfully.
and I will faithfully.
discharge.
discharge.
the duties.
the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
of Ward 4 Councilperson.
of Ward 4 Councilperson.
term ending.
term ending.
12/31/2027.
12/31/2027.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Not much to say, pretty much more of the same you heard from the other council people. We have a great administration. I want to thank my electorate for nominating me again and putting me back in office, and I look forward for another successful four years. Thank you.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kerschner.
Here.
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Marne.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Dowling.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
We are going to go right into the election of officers. Counsel, are there any nominations for President of Council?
President Donovan.
Mrs. Dowling.
I would like to nominate Councilman Sean Blake for Council President.
Second. Do I have any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations? Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kerschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Blake.
Mr. Blake, I ask you to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Sean Blake.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws.
and obey the laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions.
observe the provisions.
of the charter.
of the charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the municipality of Mentor.
of the municipality of Mentor.
and will faithfully.
and will faithfully.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office of President of Council.
of the office of President of Council.
Congratulations, Mr. President.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, counsel, for your confidence in me. I look forward to serving in this role and increasing my responsibilities to the city of Mentor. I think everybody knows I love this city. I enjoy working with our administration, our department heads, and I really look forward to this next two years because exciting things happen here in Mentor, and it's going to be great to sit in that center seat and move another two years forward because this is a great city, a great community. So thank you very much.
Counsel, we're going to move into Vice President of Council. Are there any nominations for Bryce, Vice President of Council?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate John Krieger to the position of Vice President and Mentor City Council.
Second. Counsel, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Congratulations. Julie, please call the roll. Hang on, we better vote.
We've got to call the roll.
We've got to vote, hang on.
Go ahead.
Mr. Kerschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
I'll congratulate you.
You made it.
If you'd please raise your right hand, sir, and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, John A. Krieger.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws.
and will obey the laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions.
observe the provisions.
of the charter.
of the charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the municipality of Mentor.
of the municipality of Mentor.
and will faithfully.
and will faithfully.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office of Vice President of Council.
of the office of Vice President of Council.
Congratulations, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, thank you. Not much to say. I've got a great president to work with, so I think the administration does a great job, again, our safety forces, and I guess I'm playing second fiddle to Mr. Blake. Thank you.
Mr. Blake, come and get your chair.
All right. Want me to keep your keys? Yeah. I'll be back.
Thanks, Joe.
Hi, guys.
How are you?
It's a good seat you got there, man.
Yeah, not bad.
It's a great view.
But before we get started, I'd like to recognize that today, January 9th, is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So Chief Gunch, you and your staff, I want to thank you guys. You're very much appreciated here in Mentor, and thank you for all that you do. Okay, so getting started, next on the agenda is approval of minutes. Counsel, you are on receipt of minutes of the work session of December 5th, 2023. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Julie, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Kerschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes. And also the minutes of December 5th, 2023 work session. No, we've already done that.
Regular.
Regular meeting. Regular session. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, Julie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Kerschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Okay, so next we move into public hearings. We have none this evening, and tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 24-0-001. Julie, if you'd read the legislation, please.
An ordinance accepting and authorizing the city manager to execute a bid contract to Ben's LLC for the Mentor Lagoons Bulkhead Repair Phase 5 project and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
President, congratulations.
Thank you.
Counsel, this will actually be the conclusion of D-Doc, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Swigger to give you the details. 610 feet, a little bit longer than the 500-foot sections we've been doing, but again, we wanted to take this all the way to the end, completing our first section. Mr. Swigger?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Seven bids are open November 24th for the Mentor Lagoons Bulkhead Repair Phase 5 project. Project will replace 610 linear feet of sheet-pile bulkhead wall and eight-foot-wide concrete walk along Dock D. This will complete the bulkhead replacement on Dock D. The bids range from a low bid of approximately $602,000 to a high bid of approximately $1.3 million. The low bid was received from Ben's LLC of Madison, Ohio. His bid was found to be in substantial conformance with contract requirements, therefore recommended that the contract be awarded to Ben's LLC in the amount of $602,070, which is about $987 per foot. To give you some perspective, we paid about $1,100 per foot last year and about $1,150 the year before. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost was $660,000, and the scheduled completion date for the bulkhead, the sidewalk, and rough grading is March 29th, and completion date for final grading, topsoil, seating, and mulching is April 26th. Thank you.
Counsel? Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kerschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Move to approve. Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. On November 29th, the city opened two design-build proposals for the proposed Mentor Lagoons
Nature Preserve and Marina Green Infrastructure Project and declaring an emergency.
Okay, Ken, you're up.
Members of counsel. Counsel, this project is very similar to what we did in our parking lot area at the nature preserve. It's really a sustainability project. These pavers will actually filter out a lot of the, what would otherwise run off into the lake. Half of this project is being funded through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. Approximately $270,000 represents approximately half of that. Mr. Swigger?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. On November 29th, the city opened two design-build proposals for the proposed Mentor Lagoons Nature Preserve and Marina Green Infrastructure Project. Project includes the design and construction of a 16,000-square-foot permeable paver parking lot and vegetated buffers at the Mentor Lagoons Nature Preserve and Marina. Parking lot is expected to accommodate about 22 boat trailers and is located just east of the main gate, north of the driveway, as shown on the map attached to your legislation. Proposals were received from Precision Engineering and Contracting of Solon, Ohio, and Northeast Ohio Trenching Service of Warrensville Heights, Ohio. The proposal by Northeast Ohio Trenching Service demonstrated no experience in constructing permeable paver parking lots. It also lacked a listing of subcontractors, including a design engineer and a construction schedule. They were, however, the lowest bidder at $489,500. The proposal by Precision Engineering and Contracting of Solon was found to be responsive. The design engineer listed in their proposal is McKay Engineering and Surveying of Middleburg Heights, Ohio. They also demonstrated considerable experience in installing permeable pavers. Their bid was listed as $547,000. As part of the review process, the city's engineering department did meet with Precision Engineering and Contracting and McKay Engineering on December 12th. Being that the lowest bidder had no demonstrated record of ever installing a permeable paver system, and based on selection criteria, which included qualifications as a factor, it is recommended to award the contract to the bidder that demonstrated a record of having successfully completed projects of this nature. It's therefore recommended that a contract be awarded to Precision Engineering and Contracting in the amount of $567,000, which does include a $20,000 contingency for unsuitable soil conditions to be used as needed. Precision Engineering Contracting is experienced in the construction of permeable paver parking lots and qualified to do this work. The completion date for the project is September 1st of 2024. The project will receive approximately $270,000 in financial assistance from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and the city's local match obligation will be about $296,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kerschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kerschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
This is for natural gas.
Okay.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kerschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
This is for natural gas.
Okay.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kerschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kerschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kerschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kerschner.
Yes.
purchase contracts for municipal facilities during the year 2024 upon such terms and at such prices as are deemed most advantageous to the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Nothing further, Mr. President. This is for natural gas.
Okay. Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-004 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 24-0-005. And Ken, I think this is another one in the string. I think you already covered it, but if you have anything else to add?
Do not.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Julie. I cut Julie off of the title. That's a rookie error.
You get one on your first day.
One on the first day?
What am I in?
Sorry. Julie, please.
Okay.
Our reason is natural gas 04, 005.
Right.
005.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into electricity purchase contracts for municipal facilities during the year 2024 upon such terms and at such prices as are deemed most advantageous to the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-004 has been approved. Next in line is 24-0-005. Julie, I'll let you read this one.
006.
Oh, we're all, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Good practice.
006?
006, sorry.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into participation agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation relative to the purchase of rock salt and declaring an emergency.
Ken, anything else on this one?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll ask Mr. Schweiger to weigh in on this. He may want to give you an update as to where we stand.
Okay.
Typically with the salt purchase, we join the ODOT purchasing consortium, and many communities and counties join in this. And typically, it's noticeably a lower price than I think those people who don't use the consortium. And obviously, with us being so close to the Morton Mine, we tend to get the lowest prices in the state. So program works out very well for us.
Okay. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-006 has been approved. Ordinance number 24-007?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into an insurance, into insurance contracts during the year 2024 for and on behalf of the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. In regards to casualty and property insurance, the city a few years ago elected to participate with the PEP program, the Ohio Public Employee Player Entities Program, and that has been a huge success. Recently, we were able to successfully settle claims related to the tornado and the wind damage, which most likely would have never even passed the test if we had been outside of the pool. That was approaching $200,000 of revenue to the city. So we're very happy with that. We've been able to contain the extreme challenge of reinsurance in the marketplace. It's been upward pressure for a lot of insurance carriers when, on the pricing side. So the pool has served us well, and the recommendation is to stay with them for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, counsel, I would also add to that, that Mr. Malinowski has been elected and is on the board for the public employees insurance program that we're a part of. So he's got a firsthand say on how it's managed, so we're happy about that.
Very good. All right, counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-007 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 24-0-008.
An ordinance awarding and authorizing the city manager to execute a bid contract with Zerby Construction LLC for the construction of the Marina Concessions and Kayak Rental Facility and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Kaminsky, please.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak, members of counsel. On December 18th, we opened, two bids were received for the construction of the Marina Concessions and Kayak Rental Facility for the Parks and Recreation Department. The bids ranged from a low bid of 1.2 to a high bid of 1.3 million. The low bid was received by Zerby Construction LLC based in Mentor, Ohio, whose bid was found to be in conformance with all contract requirements. Based upon a review by the Parks and Recreation Department, Burgess and Nipo Engineering and Architectural Firm, it is therefore recommended to contract with Zerby Construction LLC. Thank you.
Counsel?
To suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Welcome back, Mr. Zerby.
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-008 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 24-0-009.
An ordinance amending Part 1, Title 5, Section 151.12 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended, related to the creation of the new full-time positions of cybersecurity analyst, support service specialist, and civilian crime prevention officer, and to eliminate two full-time positions, and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President and counsel. Counsel, this is pretty much just a housekeeping item. The cybersecurity analyst has been in the budget. We just have not incorporated it into the full-time schedule into your codified ordinances. The support service specialist is a renaming of one of the positions that you see eliminated to that same schedule. And the civilian crime prevention officer is just an acknowledgement that that position went from part-time to full-time within the budget that you approved in December for operations in 2024. That's all.
Okay. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-009 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 24-0-010.
An ordinance levying special assessments for acquiring, constructing, installing, equipping, improving, maintaining, and repairing improvements, together with all appurtenances thereto necessary to abate erosion along properties within the city, which are included within the Lake Community Shoreline Special Improvement District and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. And counsel, this is your authorization to move forward with special assessments as part of the Lake County Community Shoreline Special Improvement District, the Cid that has helped a number of Mentor residents over the years since its creation. This does not submit the city to any potential default on any financial instruments whatsoever. We are not financing these projects being done through the Cid through a private lender.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-010 has been approved. Next, we have ordinance number 24-0-011.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a labor agreement on behalf of the city of Mentor with the Laborers' Union, International Union of North America Local Union 860, AFL-CIO, and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. And counsel, this is a successor agreement to the last three-year agreement with Local 860, with Laborers International. This union represents our public works employ, our full-time public works and recreation employees. That was approved by a vote of their membership yesterday. And actually, that's wrong. It was, yeah, it was yesterday. So we're pleased with that. They were great to work with. I'd like to commend Mr. Fowler, who acted as a lead negotiator in that negotiation, and we're happy to be able to move this forward.
That's good news. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-011 has been approved. Next, we have two resolutions. The first one is resolution number 24-0, I'm sorry, dash R, dash 101. Ken? I'm sorry, Julie.
A resolution requesting in advance of funds collected for the benefit of the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Now, Ken.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. This is simply annual legislation that the county auditor requires for us to collect the money as soon as practically possible. And that represents in total, there was $7 million when all settlements are in property taxes. Thank you.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 24- R-101 has been approved. Next is resolution number 24- R-102.
A resolution declaring it necessary and determining to proceed with acquiring, constructing, installing, equipping, improving, maintaining, and repairing improvements necessary for making improvements to abate erosion along properties within the city, included within the Lake Community Shoreline Special Improvement District, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. And counsel, this is an application, both includes a petition asking for the special assessment for a property located at 9248 Headlands Road. This is one of the properties included in this, among this, in, within the Cid, which would accompany the ordinance that you passed earlier in the evening, authorizing special assessments on this. Again, these are all for shoreline improvements. 100% runs with the, 100% of the cost of this is borne by the property owners in all cases, and it runs with the property.
Great. Thank you. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Resolution number 24- R-102 has been approved. So next up, second ratings, we have none. Third ratings, we have none. Favorite part of the night, managers report, Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, I just want to say on behalf of the entire administration, congratulations to you as their, as our new president, and Mr. Krieger as our vice president. And we all look forward to working with you over the next two years, as well as all of counsel. And congratulations to all of those newly elected.
Thank you.
Counsel, we'll, obviously, we've been experiencing high winds and rain with the current storm system that's been hitting our area and most of the nation this week. High winds and saturated soil can bring down trees and branches out to power lines. We have seen that already occur today. We've had some, very few, but some sporadic outages as a result. Our safety forces remind our residents that they should assume all downed or low-hanging power lines are energized and dangerous. You should stay at least 30 feet away and use extra caution where downed lines are tangled in trees or other debris, and immediately call 911 to report that incident. First Energy has advised us that they are mobilizing extra resources in anticipation of power outages in the region. Customers who experience a service interruption are encouraged to report their outage by calling 1-888-LIGHTS. That's LIGHTS with two S's. That number is 888-544-4877. Or by texting OUT TO LIGHTS, which is a text to the number 4-544-87. Or clicking the outages link on firstenergycorp.com. First Energy customers can actually sign up to receive email and text message alerts notifying them for updates after they've reported a power outages, a power outage. And then customers can also use two-way text messaging to report outages, request updates on the restoration efforts, and make other inquiries about their electric accounts. More information about how to contact and alert First Energy about outages can be found at firstenergycorp.com/Connect. City of Mentor's Hometown Heroes Banner Program returns in 2024 to honor current or former Mentor residents who have served our country in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, or Coast Guard. Banners will be displayed from Memorial Day through Veterans Day on light posts along Civic Center Boulevard and on Munson Road between Center Street and Market Street. Families and organizations can sponsor banners for $100 each to cover production costs. A limited number of banner positions are still available. Applications will be posted on the website tomorrow. You can also pick up a copy of the application at the front desk of the Mentor Municipal Center during regular business hours, or contact the Public Information Office at 440-074-5794 for information, or connect at pubinfo@cityofmentor.com for additional information. We just received notice that the Government Finance Officers Association has awarded our city a certificate achievement for excellence on financial reporting for its annual comprehensive financial report, otherwise known as the ACFER, for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2022. The certificate of achievement is a very prestigious national award recognizing conformance with the highest standards for preparation of state and local government financial reports. So congratulations, Mr. Malinowski, on that. How many years in a row is that now?
I'm happy to say that's the 39th consecutive national award, and I'm almost as happy to say I've been involved in over a quarter of a century of those. Get a pin on you. Get a pin for it.
Thanks, Dave. Mentor's Annual Chill Out will be on Saturday, January 20th, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the Mentor Civic Center Park. There will be activities all day, as well as a chili cook-off, food trucks, and fireworks at 5:45 PM. Admission and most activities are free, and details are also on the city's website. And finally, counsel, we have some new businesses that we want to wish welcome into our city. Jackpot Street Food at 8630 Mentor Avenue, Savoria Bar and Grill at 7703 Reynolds Road, Hello Gorgeous Salon and Spa at 7328 Industrial Park Boulevard, Hallmark at 7295 Mentor Avenue, Brown and Company at 9124 Tyler Boulevard, Micron Fasteners at 7620 Tyler Boulevard, and also we want to welcome the Adams Board to their new home here in Mentor at 9237 Mentor Avenue. So we welcome all of them, and we wish them great success, and we appreciate their investment in our community. That's all.
Thank you, Ken. And Dave, when you hit the 50th anniversary on that, we're going to have a great big party for you. Right. We're looking forward to it.
Mr. President?
Yes, right.
Mr. Flipiak, and Mr. Kaminsky, and Mr. Swiger, and everybody else in the administration. Every time I drive by in the cemetery and I see a promenade, and we see our new building and how it's lit up at night, I've had multiple people come up to me and just say what a great honor it is and how nice it looks. And it really came out well, so hats fall off, and it doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you.
That is beautiful. Okay. Next is Clerk's Correspondence. Julie?
Counsel's in receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court November 2023 month-end report. Counsel's also in receipt of a new liquor license permit request for Lagoon 216 LLC at 8320 Lake Shore Boulevard. That is all.
Commission Committee reports, counsel in the receipt of meeting minutes from the Tree Commission from November 8, 2023, the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals from November 9, 2023, Municipal Planning Commission from November 14, 2023. All business. Counsel? New business?
Mr. President?
Yes, Miss Dowling?
Just, I'd like to ask Mr. Flipiak and a question. On, it's exciting to see about the kayak building and the concession stand, and could you refresh my memory on the timeframe on beginning to end?
Yes. According to Mr. Zerby, they plan on starting late this winter. We're going to see some construction, with it being completed sometime in the summer.
In the summer?
That's correct.
And the kayak building, is that, I knew at one time we had talked, is that still going to be a facility that the kayaks could come out and could be a rental for the residents?
That is correct.
As it was?
That is correct.
That'll be exciting. So maybe in the fall, we'll.
That's correct.
Great place for some clam bakes and things. That's exciting.
Not quite in time for graduation season, but next year.
Exactly. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, we have appointments to make to our boards and commissions. First, we'd like to start with the two four-year terms on the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals ending December 31, 2027. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President?
Yes, Miss Dowling?
I would like to nominate Alex Koenig.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for that position? Because we're going to take these separately.
Second.
Have a second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Okay. So congratulations, Mr. Alex Koenig. We have another opening on the BZA. Do I have a nomination for that position?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Rick Zaleski to the term ending 12/31/27.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for that position? Hearing none. Julie?
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Zaleski. I see him sitting there in the audience. You're back at the, at the BZA again. Great to have you. So next up, we have one four-year term on the Municipal Planning Commission, ending December 31, 2027. Are there any nominations for that position?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Jeffrey Varga.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for that position?
A second. Or a second?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, it's okay.
Jumping the gun again.
I'll take a second.
There you go.
Take a second.
Okay. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Congratulations, Jeff Varga, returning to the Planning Commission. Next, there are three three-year terms on the Community Arts Commission, ending December 31, 2026. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President?
Yes, Miss Dowling?
I would like to nominate Teresa Gray to serve on a three-year term on the Community Arts Commission, ending 12/31/2026.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for that position? Okay, Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, Teresa. Our second position on the Community Arts Commission, do I have a nomination?
Mr. President, I have Fred Krupa.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any other nominations for that position? Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Okay, the third position, third and last position on the Community Arts Commission, do I have a nomination?
It's on that sheet. I apologize.
It's okay.
I thought I had the next one. Community Arts. Community Arts. I know I can't see it. Joanna? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Joanna. Go ahead, just do it. I'd like to nominate Joanna Orgovin. I apologize. I thought I had the next one.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for that position?
Hard to see. I know.
All right. Hearing none. Julie, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Okay. So next up, we have one three-year term on the Fair Housing Board that ends December 31, 2026.
Now I get to go.
Now you get to go.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Tony Zampidro.
Second.
All right. Any other nominations for that position? Hearing none. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Thank you. And congratulations, Tony Zampidro. Next is one four-year term on the Tree Commission, ending December 31, 2027. Do I have a?
President, I'd like to nominate Maureen McConnell.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Are there any other nominations for that position? Hearing none. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, one, one of the members that's coming off there served for quite a long time and did a fantastic job, and that's Cindy Code Fenner. I want to thank her for the time she spent on that committee.
She did a wonderful job too, for a long time. So thank you, Cindy. Okay, moving on. Next, there are two two-year terms on the Income Tax Board of Review, ending December 31, 2025. We'll take the first spot. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President, I'll nominate Steve Ammerman.
Second.
Any other nominations for that first position? Hearing none. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And next, we'll take the second position on the Income Tax Board of Review.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Ken Stopek for the term ending 12/31/2025.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for that position? Hearing none. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
I'd like to thank all those people stepping forward, volunteering their time to serve on our boards and commissions. That's certainly appreciated, and congratulations to all of them. Next, we have persons before counsel. Julie, do we have anybody? Nobody? Nobody has signed up? All right, so, um.
Move to adjourn.
And second.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.